I'm right here, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, great. I can't. I'm not seeing the whole screen, so.
Joe is here too.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, great. So everyone's here. Uh, hey, everyone. Hey, Howard.
Meg, can you hear me?
Oh, yep, I can hear you.
Got everyone on one screen. Finally.
Megan?
Um, hello, everyone. Welcome to the August twenty-fifth special meeting of the Planning Board. Um, I'm gonna start by just stating that this is a Zoom-only meeting. Um, please be careful not to share your screens. This is being audio and video recorded. Um, I'll do a quick roll call. Board members, Nat?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Hillary?
Here.
Alternates, Stephen Welch? Abby Di Molina?
Here.
And Howard Matts?
Here.
Great. Uh, staff members, Leslie Snell?
Here.
Meg Trudell?
Here.
Billy Saad?
Here.
Catherine Ancero? No? Okay. Um, and we have, um, we have the honor of, uh, John Giorgio attending. Thank you, John. Um.
Here.
Great. Thank you. Um, I would, um, accept a motion to, uh, approve the agenda, please.
Go move. Second.
Uh, that's made by John Kitchener, seconded by Nat. John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Um, like to take this moment for public comment, if I could, um, for things not otherwise on the agenda and limited to two minutes, please. Anyone out there, Billy?
No, no hands are raised.
Okay, great. So, um, quickly, uh, I'd like to wish all our board members and community members that celebrate Rosh Hashanah, a happy Rosh Hashanah. Um, I'd also like to apologize to the members of the Jewish community for having this meeting today. Um, I assure you that it's not from a place of disrespect or, um, insensitivity, but, but rather a statutory necessity. So again, I apologize, um, to the community members and, um, hopefully they can forgive us. Um. So I, I think, um, where I'd like to start this is maybe give the board, um, kind of an overview of, of the process that created this warrant article before you. And it really started when the Planning Board, in, in some sense, punted this to, to, the, the Select Board punted it to Planning, saying that this was a zoning issue and it would be, it would be, um, best if the Planning Board could come up with a consensus article. And, and so when that happened, um, Tom Dixon from the Select Board and myself, we started sitting down with a wide variety of people on this island, um, stakeholders, uh, individuals from every corner and, and just having discussions, um, which turned into negotiations, which really in, in the end turned into what is before you. Um, I, I wanna make it really clear that this consensus really lies on a, on a knife's edge. That, um, any movement to either broaden the restrictions or to reduce the restrictions will result in losing support from one side or another. And so, um, I think that's important as we go into our discussions for everyone to understand. Um, so you've also found in your packet a couple suggested edits, um, one from, from Howard Matts, um, and two from Emily, the, the more recent one from Emily, and unfortunately, that's my fault that you didn't get it till today, but, um, I think that, that these are open for discussions, right? But let's keep in mind my concern about the razor's edge consensus we have here. Um, I would also like to suggest that, that, right, we have a job before us today, and, and that job is really just to decide whether this article, we're willing to bring forward this article, call it our own, and put it on the warrant. Um, we're not here to discuss the merits of another citizen's article that will be before us on the ninth. We're really just here to talk about whether we as a board can get behind this article and put it forward on the warrant. Um, this is not the time for any of us individual board members to be entrenched in our own personal position.
Not the time for any of us individual board members to be entrenched in our own personal positions.
Am I the only one that heard that?
No, what was that?
Am I the only one that heard that?
No, what was that? As, as they say, was it odd or was it God?
What?
That was AI.
As they say, was it odd or was it God?
Why is that happening?
That was AI, that was AI.
Why is that happening? Yeah, I, I'm on an echo.
I would say, everyone, if you're not actively speaking, can you?
Yeah, I, I'm on an echo.
I would say, everyone, if you're not actively speaking, can you mute?
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, Houston, we have a problem.
Okay. Hopefully this works. So again, I, I would encourage us as a board not to get entrenched our own personal opinions on short-term rentals. Everyone sitting here today, except for one, has voted multiple times to give a positive recommendation to a full codification article. So, um, I think what we really need to focus on is what is best for us as a community. Um, and I would suggest that what's best for the community is that they have options. Um, yes, the tie line hasn't been perfect, but I think we would do a disservice as a board to the community that elected us if we don't, if we don't offer this on the warrant and offer the community, um, an option or options. So with that said, um, I open it up to the board for discussion. Who would like to go first? John? You're muted still, John.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, so I'm not gonna be repetitive with what you said. I would just like to, though, support what you said by, um, saying that w- w- we, we, I think we must put an article, you know, o- o- on the warrant, you know, i- i- in fairness to our community. And I do think, you know, the process that you and Tom Dixon have been through, um, you know, we have an article here that you call it the knife edge. It is, but it's a good one, though. The article's a good one. It's better than, you know, I've been involved in these things since their first work group. And this, um, seems to me that it has a good chance of, um, passing. And if we need to make a few adjustments, perhaps, but, um, again, I wouldn't be in favor of adjustments because that's one of the reasons that the work group article failed. And, um, keeping this coalition together that you've got, you and Tom, um, I, I would hate for us to do anything that even seems minor, and yet it's enough for, you know, one group or another to fall out of, uh, of the, 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 the sort of consolidation that we've got. So, yeah, I, I strongly agree with it, Mr. Chair. Um, glad to see that, um, two parts of it are in zoning and one in, in general bylaw. I think that's exactly the right place for the three pieces. Um, so, yeah, um, I'm a supporter of this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other members?
Um, I have some comments.
Yes.
So, um, first I want to thank you and Tom Dixon for taking this upon yourself. It's, um, really, it really takes the leadership of, um, a couple people to step forward and decide they're gonna do the really hard work of bringing people together. Um, you know, never make any progress without that. And from what I understand, um, just from speaking to different people in the community, not anybody on this board, um, the conversations have been wide-ranging and, um, involving people from many different camps. So, um, I think for members of the public listening to this conversation who have questions of, well, how is this even developed? Um, it was, I, I, I feel comfortable that it was, um, sincerely developed for the good of the community, um, and including many, many people. I, um, do think that all planning articles should be, uh, brought forward with, uh, um, opportunity for everyone in the community to comment. And so I think if we do vote today to put this on the warrant, we have to commit to a robust schedule of, um, opportunities for people to come forward, not to challenge this article, because I think we all have to commit to the framework, but to perfect certain aspects. Because, um, one of the great benefits of a public process is that, um, the many smart people in our community think, say, well, you know, you didn't think of this. And we can't be arrogant, you know, we have to recognize that we don't think of everything. And the, the public hearings and the public vettings help people bring topics up, some of which will, will address and put to rest, um, because we've know things or have done the work and can educate, but some of which are, are really legitimate. Um, so I su- absolutely support this framework of an accessory use, um, short-term rental with the, uh, the, the subordinate use being defined by a number of days. Um, I think we do need to address the questions that have been raised by the non-voting taxpayer group and by other people who just haven't gotten organized to send any letters yet, but I'm sure have the questions, which is what is the economic impact? And we have a very short period of time to do that. Um, I personally have some questions. I don't know when is the right time to ask them about the definition of hosted stay. This concept of hosted stay is extremely important. Um, and I'm a little concerned that we're not achieving what, that we might not be achieving what we want to achieve. So I want to have an opportunity to ask questions of John Giorgio about that. I don't know when that time is.
Now is appropriate, Hillary, if you like. Yeah.
Okay.
The John is, is perfect.
Okay. Does anybody else wanna say anything before I ask my detailed questions? No. Okay.
Hold on a second. Le- Leslie?
I just, I wanna point out for everybody, am I frozen? Um, I wanna point out to everybody that we do have to get the legal ad to the INM as soon as this meeting adjourns. And it, it needs to be reflective of what you all ultimately vote to include in the warrant. So if you do have perhaps some substantive changes, that's fine, but now would be the time to suggest those. Um, if it's going to change, you know, how I may need to word the, the, uh, the, uh, legal ad.
Great. Great. That's what we're here for. So.
Word the, the, uh, legal ad.
Great. Great. That's what we're here for. So, um.
Um.
Yes, John. Uh, you're muted, John. John, you're muted. John, you're muted.
I just was requesting that, um.
John, you're muted.
I'm not muted.
Not, not anymore. You were muted.
Can you not hear me?
Not, not anymore. You were muted ago.
Oh, sorry. Um, I, I think if possible, let's put the definition of hosted stay from the bylaw. Uh, can we put that up?
Dave, do you have two windows open? I wanna check his computer. Dave, do you have two windows open? I wanna check his computer.
Give me just a moment. I'm trying to pull up the correct version. Give me just a moment. I'm trying to pull up the correct version.
I only have one window open.
John, I think you might have something else open playing.
I only have one window.
John, I think you might have something else open playing in the, we're getting a bunch.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Do you have two windows open? I, I, we're hearing feedback from your computer. Do you have two windows open? I, I, we're hearing feedback from your computer.
Okay, so there's the definition of, okay, so, they're operator, Hillary.
There's the definition of, of, they're operator, Hillary.
Okay, uh, thank you. I'll proceed and we'll see if we hear everything twice. Um, so my question here is, I believe, uh, one is, my first question is, is the intention of this article to say, you know, if you have a home on Nantucket, you live in your primary residence, or you live in your cottage on your property and you rent whatever one you're not living in, um, is, uh, that, that is not considered a short-term rental. It's considered a hosted stay. Um, if you are, um, moved out of your primary residence for the summer and living in Maine and you're renting your, um, house, or if you're, if you're not, if you are on vacation, but that's, you know, that's where you live and you're on vacation, you're not physically there, is it still a hosted stay or is it considered a short-term rental?
John, that's, that's you. I think that if you, I, I think it says clearly that the person needs to be there when not working. So that means they need to be there at night, but John, the floor is yours. John, you're muted. John, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, you can hear me. A, a hosted stay is a subset of a short-term rental. So it has to meet the definition of short-term rental. And if it does, then a hosted stay requires that either the owner or the operator is present or occupies secondary dwelling unit on the same lot. So in your example, Hillary, if you go to Maine, it's not a hosted stay. Uh, you're the owner, you go to Maine, you would have to have an operator on site in order for you to take advantage of this, um, uh, special allowance for hosted stays. Does that make sense?
Yes. Is there any complication by the fact that it says that during daytime and/or?
And so.
Any complication by the fact that it says that during daytime and/or? I mean, obviously.
If you, um, it, no, uh, no, whether you're the owner or the operator, whether you're the owner or the operator, you have to be on the premises except during the daytime and/or work hours. So you have to sleep there, either the owner or the operator.
Okay, thank you.
A- and any other questions, Hillary?
Okay, thank you.
A- and any other questions, Hillary?
Um, well, one other question I had was about the, um, date of, of August thirty-first and why we wouldn't extend this through Labor Day.
Um, so that was i- i- in all honesty, a horse trade. Um, um, there was some members of, um, the stakeholders that felt strongly that the seven, seven, in other words, the forty-nine days, the seven-day, the seven-day minimum stay, seven turnovers in that time period should be in zoning. And, and I, I fought hard against that. Um, just because structurally it, it wasn't what I believe was right, but in the end, I, I accepted it with, um, a shortening of the, of the prime season. And, and really that was, um, a lot of the feedback we got from, from the real estate professional side was, hey, you know, I can't tell you that I'm going to support this because I, I truly am gonna support full codification, but if that fails, I can support this with these changes. And so a lot of the, a lot of the conversation around the real estate professionals was, was kind of based on that scenario. Very few outright said that they would support. So I think that we need to find the support where we can get it, a- and if we lengthened that time, we would lose the little support we get from that side, and I think the little support we need, need to get this over the finish line. If that makes sense to you.
Yeah, thank you for the explanation.
Yes. Um, board members, any other board members, questions, concerns? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm, Dave, when I first read this, I mean, I, I mean, I know you did a, a ton of work and speaking to you over the years and, um, I mean, a razor's edge is being polite. I mean, you really have, like, worked with everyone and tried to, you know, I know your phone and sitting with you sometimes and just watching your phone blow up, people reaching out to you. But, um, you know, when I first read this, I thought this was just far too impactful on Nantucket. Um, but at the same time, you know, breaking it down and looking at, you know, the thirty festivals and, you know, like we have and, you know, breaking down the days and et cetera, like really trying to figure out when people come to Nantucket. And the, the, uh, N-Rab, you know, report really had a lot of great information in there. It, it could move a little bit up, you know, I think of the needle. Um, I don't think it goes, if it goes any less, I think that would really be bad and hurtful for Nantucket. But a- at the same time, uh, Nantucket needs a vote on this, and I, I definitely think it should go into the warrant. It definitely should be moved forward. I, I'm not a favorite. I think this is a, a backstop. Um, but I don't think that, uh, we should be saying no to this in any way, shape or form, but I, I do think it is a little too restrictive just to be kind to it. But, um, uh, I, I think that, you know, everyone has done a lot of work in this. And the previous article by Mr. Borges came really close last time, so, uh, you know, I, I think we definitely have to have something by the end of the town meeting in place, um, and, and control our own fate, because otherwise I think we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. So, and speaking to people that, you know, can't, couldn't rent the house for thirty-one days, they just would lose their home, their taxes, you know, I, um, have friends that have reached out to me, and I think this is really important that we, we kind of move this forward. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Howard?
Hey, John, good morning. I, I have a couple of questions that I'd love explanations for, if you don't mind. Um, the first one is that in the definition of short-term rental, you said. If you don't mind, um, the first one is that in the definition of short-term rental, you said the rental property for a total of fourteen days or less shall not be considered a short-term rental. And I wondered property for a total of fourteen days or less shall not be considered a short-term rental. And I wondered how, how that plays into excluding rentals that are like weekly rentals from control of this. Excluding posed articles that are like weekly rentals from control of this proposed article.
Ti- timeout for a second, everyone. We need to.
So that, that, that is, uh.
Time out for a second, everyone. We need to, we, the, this is, this is untenable. Um, I, I don't know how to resolve this. Meg, do you have any ideas?
Uh, the feedback's coming from your computer, John Giorgio. So I don't know if you wanna try and log out and log back in.
And log back in, John?
It sounds almost like you have the YouTube playing at the same time because there's a bit of a delay. Um, I'm not sure if that's on in your background or not. If it is, you could X out of that, or maybe just try and log off and log back in.
I apologize, but I, this is gonna drive us all nuts if we don't figure this out now. So let's just wait a minute and let John get back in and hopefully that resolves it. Sorry, Howard, to, to step on your, your moment here.
Oh, no, I'd rather it be John who's the rock star here than me.
While we wait for John, should, should we see if there's any other comments from the board members? And then we can go back to Howard and John when he comes back on, or if it's long-winded, maybe let's wait. But if it's a short statement or question, I think we should, it would be.
I think we, Mr. Chairman, with my bad voice, I don't think we should talk without John on.
Okay, that's fair.
I mean, we, we are rare to have him, and we need him today.
Yep, agreed.
As much as we've ever needed him on this meeting.
Okay, agreed. So we'll just, we'll take a, a timeout and wait for John to get back on.
I do have a haircut at one o'clock. Thank God.
Nat, I've got some, some scissors. I can stop by and give you a tune-up if you need it.
You know, Dave and I can give you tips.
Yes.
Tips.
I'd love to see the result of that.
I gotta get rid of this hair. It's killing me.
Uh, I don't think this board's ready for three bald members. Uh, come on, John.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and no echoes. So that's amazing.
Oh, good.
Great. So, um, Howard, do you wanna state your question again so that we can be clear, please?
Uh, certainly. John, in the short-term rental, um, first paragraph, it says that the rental property for a total of fourteen days or less shall not be considered a short-term rental. And I didn't really understand how this dovetailed into, um, the prohibition or restrictions that you're trying to cover here, because in fact, i- it doesn't say that the rental, um, th- th- that it's cumulative for a total cumulative of fourteen days. And in fact, some rentals are, short-term rentals are seven days.
Yeah, just give me a half a second here. So that, um, that comes directly, Howard, from the state law definition and also the general bylaw. And what that means is if you, if you rent your property as a short-term rental for fewer than a total of fourteen days a year, it's not considered a short-term rental.
And, and we're all comfortable with that exclusion, so it's really not, it's, it's, uh, forty-nine, no more than forty-nine days and, and, um, no less than fourteen days to be covered by this.
Think of it this way, um, you, you have a house, you're going to Europe for a month, and you have a friend who wants to actually rent the house from you for a week. And that's the only time you rent the house is the short-term rental the entire year. That rental of seven days, because you rent a total of fewer than fourteen days in any year, you're, that is not considered a short-term rental.
Would this include the word cumulative? Can you include it, even though it's a state prescribed?
I would not change that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm very, um, I'm very sensitive to making sure that our definitions are consistent.
Yeah, I, I respect that.
Bylaw and, and the zoning bylaw. But that's what it means. It's, um, it's, it's a, that's, I, I'm very comfortable with that, Mike.
Okay, thank you. I, I respect that. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I, I have a question with regard to sublease. Uh, in the bottom of, uh, the number three, the paragraph that begins notwithstanding. In the bottom of, uh, the number three, the paragraph that begins notwithstanding, John, it says a dwelling unit may not be subleased to any other person during the period that is used for a short-term rental. And, and yet you, in the word operator, you have the word sublease there.
But that's not, um, I don't believe that that is intended. Um, I don't think that contradicts this, um, sentence in section three. Um, it, um, it, it, the set, the sentence in section three is intended to say that if you, if you sign a 30-day lease, right? With someone, that's a short-term rental. And that, so let's say you do that, that less C or sub less C, that, well, that's a less C, shall not be allowed to sublet that short-term rental to anyone else during that 30-day tenancy.
So John, is there a need for the word sublease in the operator definition then?
I would leave it. I'm just saying, because that's straight out of state law.
Thank you.
Howard, can I jump in for a second? I don't mean to interrupt you. And, and I don't want to blow this discussion up, but I, I think the intent was, John, i- in putting the sublease in, is that somebody couldn't rent a house for three months here and then turn it into a short-term rental. And, and I just want to make sure that that intent is covered here.
Can we move down, uh, back up to the definition of operator, please? And I apologize because I'm now on my phone.
We're just happy to have you, John.
So what was your question against, uh, again, Dave?
My, well, the intent, right, of us asking to have that sublease line put in the footnotes was the concern that a organization or a company could rent a, a house for, for three months and then turn around and use it as a short-term rental. And I think that, that, that the general consensus amongst everyone was that that was something that people didn't want to happen.
And I think that achieves that result.
Okay, thank, that, that's my concern. Thank you, Howard. I'm sorry to, to.
No, no, my only comments are, are really, um, technical and the, and when John says that that's just marrying the state law, that pretty much answers the questions that I'm raising, um, for clarification. But I, I, and I also, John, uh, John, under the word operator, I guess this is probably language that's also tracking it. It says, except that the less C of a short-term renter shall not be considered an operator. Right? That, that to me again is that I don't, I don't particularly understand that, but if that's tracking state law, I'm not going to make a comment on it.
Yes.
And then the last thing is, do we, in short-term rental, we need a definition of transient residential facility? I don't really know what that might or might not be.
I, again, that, that is, I believe that's covered, is it not? Wesley or Megan, in your existing definitions in the zoning bylaw?
I'm sorry, could someone answer that question?
Howard is asking about the use of the term transient in, um, in the definition of short-term rental. Can we go back up to that, please? There's a reference there to a transient residential facility.
We do have that, uh, defined already in the zoning bylaw.
Right.
Residential facility.
Right.
That be a capital T and, and a reference maybe? Or?
Um, so I don't have the exact. Uh, let's just see here.
You know, you don't need to answer that now. You can look it up and just do whatever's right.
Okay, we'll take that under consideration.
Yeah, thank you. That, that's all my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Howard. Uh, before we go to you now, I just want to backtrack, um, a little bit on the questions, surrounding operator, um, and maybe suggest that instead of, of the word present, we could add presently living and maybe that would cover the concerns that Hillary.
I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay.
To be totally, I'm going to be very direct today, okay?
Please do, John.
Um, I, I think presently living is, use of that word living is going to create an ambiguity.
Okay.
Present means physically present on the property overnight. That's what it means, and I think we should stick to that.
Perfect, John. Thank you. Nat, you, you ready now?
First sigh that you heard. At least you're not hearing it twice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, John, et cetera. Um, so I'm going to say a few things that haven't been said, that's for sure. We're going to start out with, imagine zoning on Nantucket. The map today being adopted in 1972. Are you kidding me? It would never have passed. And the reason that zoning passed in 1972 for Nantucket Island was because it was only four districts and all the big property owners got what they wanted. RC, which is really not zoning at all, really. Now we've gotten rid of it all. Oh, it took 45 years to fix zoning on Nantucket. So if you go back 50 years of renting, not, I'm not going to go to 100. I'm not going to talk about the 1890s. I'm going to talk about when we were born or a little, maybe before, but all of us are in the, that bracket. We were just renting. Imagine putting all of the changes in the last 50 to 60 years from the old beach buggies, beach buggies. I mean, when's the last time you heard someone use that word, beach buggy, really? Well, that's what people used to come over here with, Jeeps, fishing poles, Styrofoam surfboards. And they rent a cottage in Surfside, wherever. Stay here for a month, stay here for two weeks, go back to Woods Hole with their Jeep. I think it's safe to say that anybody on this island that thinks we're going to go back to that era really should not be involved in the conversation. However, we are trying, in my opinion, to put 50 to 60 years of change back in the bottle and starting over. I think that's wrong. I think it's impossible. I think it's unenforceable. That's the only word that keeps coming into my head every time I listen to one little piece of something. The hosted stay. It says in that, uh, bylaw that was put up on the screen. And I've said this at previous meetings, you know, over the last three or four years. It says on the same lot. That's dumb. Shouldn't say that. What if you have R1 zoning? And you own two 5,000 square foot lots next to each other? What the hell difference does it make? But because it says same lot, it's an ambiguity, like John said, don't mean to sound like an attorney, but that's ridiculous. It shouldn't say that. There should be other language that allows someone to own two lots. But they could be across the street from each other. This is Nantucket. We got a bazillion different lot sizes that, for a variety of reasons, that goes back years, decades. So to me, if we don't legalize so renting your property in whatever fashion you want, need, your family, your personal portfolio that I always talk about, they're all different. And regulate after it's legal. We will never be in the right place. We can talk this to death a thousand ways. This article that we're discussing right now is not really a planning board article. We're being asked to sponsor an article that isn't really a true planning board article. This is the first time that we've ever done anything like this. This is not CDT zoning on North Water Street. This isn't getting rid of RC2 at Richmond's before it was Richmond's or after it was just Richmond, right? 2015. This is, this is different. This is like building codes all getting changed, little pieces at the planning board, but it's not really a planning board article. We're taking ownership of this and it's bothering me because the, I understand it. I'm totally fine with the concept of having this article go-to-town meeting, but the perception that the planning board is a, is taking ownership of it is a different rabbit hole that we have not gone down before in my, at least to my rec, my recollection. The non-voting taxpayer letter, by the way, was awesome. And I think everybody needs to read that twice. That was good. A lot of things were brought up in that, that we talk about over the last five years. So I'd like John, since he's on the meeting, which is fantastic, and I appreciate that. I don't think we could have this meeting without him here. I would like John to explain that's this 2015 why in the use chart issue in English, so that it does not get used as like we screwed up in league, in renting your property in any way, shape or form from 1972 to 2015 was totally legal and there was never a problem versus how this got caught once the state came up with what a short-term, nobody have even heard of a short-term rental in 2015. And we've been dragged into this like the ADU dwelling, the fourth dwelling, just like this. It's the same exact thing. We have been given these rules, these definitions rather, by the state that don't fit Nantucket's model. Telling people that can't afford to stay here longer than X number of days is almost discrimination, really. And it's actually goes against everything we used to talk about in the old days with too many cars on the boat, too many cars on the island and people walking with suitcases to me is a good thing. Sunday morning I went to the boat and there was gotta be 15 people walking with suitcases going to the boat for the 9:30 fast ferry. And I'm like, boy, they didn't bring a car. That used to be like the desirable thing. Now we don't even care about that. We're actually encouraging people to bring more cars in theory. So John, can you explain this 2015 thing? Just so that we can get a real, the real definition of what happened regarding that. Because we kind of get blamed for stuff, John, as you know.
So Nate, I really can't explain it. How's that for an answer from a lawyer?
That's okay. It's Nantucket.
What we know, what we know is that that 2015 amendment had some degree of significance to Judge Vey in the land court. And, um, however, in my opinion, and I have said this from day one, in order to protect the town against these kinds of lawsuits, you need to deal with this short-term rental issue and deal with it in the zoning bylaw to moot that litigation. Now, I know we're not supposed to talk about the, the, but that petitioned article is a very different approach than what is before you today. It quote, unquote, fixes the, what happened in 2015 by adding to, um, the principal use definition, both rentals, it would, uh, inclu- including rentals and short-term rentals. And other than that, the only guardrail is that the, the short-term rental has to comply with chapter 123. So that's one approach. This approach that's before you today is very different. Um, they are both equally acceptable from a legal standpoint, in my opinion. I, I think that the petitioned article and this article would both take the decision out of the land court judge. Now it's on appeal to the appeals court. And it would bring back to the town your autonomy, autonomy to enact zoning bylaws that are best suited for Nantucket. Either one of them, in my opinion, would moot the land court case. So it becomes a question of, do you want? Do you want a permissive bylaw or do you want a more restrictive bylaw? That's a policy question for a town meeting to decide.
So.
Does, does that answer your question?
Yeah, in, in a, in a sense, it, it's a glitch. It's something that Judge Vey saw and is interpreting it in the way he's interpreting it, the 2015.
Yeah, I.
But.
Yeah, now we've, we've, we've appealed that, Nate, right?
Yep.
We've appealed that decision, but, but it's almost, it's a little bit of a red herring, I think, even for Judge Vey.
Oh, I agree.
Because ultimately, ultimately what Judge Vey found was that a short-term rental is a commercial use. It's not allowed in, which is not expressly allowed in, in, uh, any of your residential, um, uh, districts. And as you know, you have a prohibitive provision that says any use that's not expressly allowed is prohibited. That is the core of Judge Vey's decision. Now, your, your, um, building commissioner and your zoning board of appeals felt differently. But the decision is the decision and it's on appeal to the appeals court. How that's going to resolve itself remains to be seen. But it doesn't change my advice to the town, enter the planning board, that you deal with this in your zoning bylaw in a way that is best for Nantucket. And that's a policy question, Nate.
Yeah.
I would say it's a very important planning concern. And the right place for this is a well-thought-out, well-reasoned article sponsored by the planning board. Is this the right one? Well, that's what you're here to decide. That's not my decision. That's yours.
Okay, thank you for that. And you just made my point about solving it all from zero. Like zoning in 1972. If you had a crystal ball in 72 of what Nantucket was going to look like and the attractiveness in Hyannis Boat Service and how Nantucket changed so much. in Hyannis Boat Service and how Nantucket changed so much in the late eighties. What would zoning have looked like in nineteen seventy-two if you had that crystal ball? I can tell you wouldn't have RC. I can tell you that. But bottom line is, there are gonna be more reasons for year-round residents in the future to rent in specific ways as time goes on than there is today. And that already exists a lot now, of course, but it's gonna get to be more as new property owners that live here around. Some of them are our kids. Are gonna have to earn money beyond their job to pay for their property. Cause nothing is going down over here. Not even eggs and milk, Dave. So like that. So I understand what everyone involved in this article is trying to do. We're trying to like fillet this fish one time. But it, it's not right to try to go that far in one article when we have not legalized the use of, you know, the whole process of renting. Imagine Nantucket losing the ability to rent. I mean, people don't believe that that could happen, but we're on that cliff with this lawsuit. And, you know, if you haven't heard about the grapes case and if you haven't heard about the property owner at Dairy Moore Road, at Delaney Road, that sold his property after decades, generationally owning it from being sued. And now who's buying it? A multimillionaire that doesn't have to rent. That is what is facing us today. I have no issue regulating as needed like we have with all kinds of other things, restaurants, weed. I mean, whatever. Uh, it doesn't matter what it is. You gotta legalize it before you regulate to this level, in my opinion. And I think I'm not alone. But supporting the article to go to town meeting is not the same question as supporting the article's passage. And that is the question that we have in front of us today. And my issue with that is the perception of the community and how people think about this. Being where we're taking on this article like it's ours. When we're trying to, what Dave has tried to do is to try to finally end this thing or give two choices that are clear at town meeting, at special town meeting. And I, and there's a lot of cases to be made for that. But this island has a really short memory, unfortunately, about a lot of stuff. And I bring that up a lot at meetings about stuff, but in this case, it has to be extremely clear that this is being not technically being written, sponsored by us, but with, well, supported necessarily, but we're trying to find a way to get two articles on town meeting floor to have a real choice instead of a lot of confusion. So there you go, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure you're excited about listening to that.
Nat, I would expect nothing less. Um, but I'm not gonna argue your points. Uh, Hillary.
Thank you very much. Um, Nat, thank you for your comments. I, I think we also can't forget, um, we can't forget the history of Nantucket's land use and how it evolved since we got zoning in place in nineteen seventy-two. And Nat is right that there's been, you know, an evolution and things that were just taken for granted are now, you know, had to change over time. And this is one of them. Um, I think it's important to remember that in the time that Nat is talking about, which is, you know, when my relatives first started coming to the island, every short term rental would have um been allowable under this bylaw that we're sponsoring. They all happened between June fifteenth and Labor Day. Um, people came for uh seven, fourteen, even twenty-eight day rental periods. Um, there was no shoulder season. Um, there were very few contract changes. So I think um the, the purpose of zoning, good zoning is able to happen with community permission. And people are most likely to support something that reflects either one of two things. The conditions that they have on the ground today or some vision of where they want to go. And right now, um, we have to remember the last five years. Okay. We, we can't put, Nat, we can't put the last five years back in a bottle either. We have had, you know, six town meetings. This full codification has either been, you know, a bullet, like dodged and tabled because it didn't have support to pass, or it's with Article sixty-six not passed. And, you know, people say, oh, well, it's close fifty votes. Fifty votes is, is not that close. I mean, it was definitive. So I think we have to accept, even if there are individuals on this board who would like to see the full codification happen, it doesn't have support to pass. So what this article does is it makes it legal. It addresses all of the concerns that people have. And, you know, citizens have gotten together. They want the full codification. They've exercised their civic right to break, to call a town meeting. They will be putting an article on the warrant. That's their right. And they can try once again um to, to have it supported. But we, the planning board, we have to support what's best for the overall community. And uh we've just been through a visionary session where we heard overdevelopment, pollution, overcrowding. And even if you don't think that that, that's not how you see Nantucket, you know, you like to have lots of people walking around with suitcases. That's what we heard from the community. So um I want to finally emphasize this, this idea that it um that, you know, there was a mistake. There's no evidence of that. The reason why this um, you know, phrase about allowing rentals was dropped is lost to history. And it is a red herring. And it's no, it's no argument to support full codification. The argument to support for codification is that you think it's the right thing for Nantucket and you can stand up at town meeting and explain why you think that. At this point, I think we've heard a number of people from the planning board say that we have to get the support from both sides and that this is something that reflects like ninety percent of rentals, as we saw in the Narab report. And the other article can go first and have its chance, but we, as the board that has been elected to look out for the benefit of this island, to keep this island that is a fragile place special, protected, preserve it for future generations, that we have to advance something that the whole community, you know, if they miss their moonshot, that the whole community can support. So I hope that everybody could get behind this article with strength as a board looking out for the future of Nantucket.
Well said, Hillary. Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I think Hillary brought up an important point that, I mean, I think before we can say what the community wants or doesn't want, because I know, I'm sure you've been hearing a lot. I've been hearing a lot. I think that um the important thing is to, I think as Nat pointed out, I think to have options, but I do think we should listen to the community and I think having the public hearing on, on both articles is really important before the planning board decides one way or the other what to support or not support. Cause I mean, I hear what Nat says as well as this isn't really a planning board issue, but I just think we need to make sure we listen to everyone in the community. And since there hasn't been a public hearing on the other article, I just think we, before we make any declaration about, people have said what they think and, you know, whether or not we should support the article. I support putting it on the warrant, but I just think it's premature to decide whether or not we have completely heard from the entire community on the two articles without actually holding a public hearing and hearing from the community on the two articles.
No, but I, I agree, Abby. And I think I tried to make that point it, when, when I first talked in the beginning is that that we really need to focus on, on whether we want to promote this on to, to the warrant and, and, and Nat says we've never done this. I would argue this is exactly what we did on North Water Street with the, with the CDT. We took up a, a article that wasn't ours and we supported it to town meeting. And we got our butts kicked. Thank you very much. So um I, I, I um
I'd like to respond to that one, but go ahead.
So um I, I think that it's important that we listen to the community, which is very divided on this issue and offer them something other than full codification, which in all due respect, because I was part of this decision, is that we have rammed full codification down the public's throat for almost six years now, and it has failed every single time. We are elected officials. We need to listen to the community. And if the community has rejected full codification that many times, we need to offer them a better option. And, and I'll end it at that. Leslie? You're
There we go. I mean, kind of hit on like what I wanted to point out, which was, you know, the, the planning board as a matter of routine brings forward article concepts. And then you hold the public hearing and you hear from the public and you talk amongst yourselves. And then you either recommend the article, you recommend it with changes, or you don't recommend it. Just because you're voting to put it on the warrant doesn't mean that you support it per se, but you support the concept advancing into a public forum.
Thank you, Leslie. So a- at this point, I, I think that it's important and Hillary, I'll get right back to you, but I, I would like to, I think we've dealt with um with Howard's concerns and edit changes. Um, I think to be fair, we need to address um the ones that Emily has sent forward to us. Um, and, and I think that the board needs to have a discussion on those. Um, I, I don't want to put us in a position where we get to the public hearing and we're making motions that substantively change this article. I, I think that is a, a, a death knell. And if we are going to change, and again, I caution everyone against it just because of the fine line we're walking here, but we do need to address it to be, to be fair and honest. And um so Hil- Hillary, if you have something to say, but
Yeah, I have a technical question, Dave.
Yes.
Um, my technical question is, so um in terms of the public hearing, we have the public hearing. And then um under statute, there has to be um twenty-one days or a planning board report before town meeting can vote on it. Mr. Giorgio, isn't that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's essentially correct. The, the planning board has to make a report and recommendation to town meeting. And if there is no report and recommendation, the article cannot go forward at town meeting unless twenty-one days has elapsed.
Okay, and sorry, follow-up question. If we, I think we really need multiple public hearings on these matters. Um, so is it twenty-one days from the first public hearing or twenty-one days from when the pub, multiple public hearings conclude?
Um, I'm actually not sure, Hillary, I'd have to look at that, but you've got a much more significant deadline in terms if you're thinking about multiple hearings. And then your charter requirement that the finance committee warrant booklet with motions be mailed to all um registered voters at least fourteen days before town meeting. So um Le- Leslie can go through the timing, but my understanding is um really, you shouldn't, you should vote today whether to advance this article or not. Um, because the select board has a special meeting on Friday where they're gonna open and close the warrant, right? So we know that um the one petitioned article has certified signatures, so that will, has to go on the warrant. And then presumably the select board would place this article on the warrant if requested by the planning board, right? Um, you have to, um, you have to have your planning, your notice of the public hearing insufficient time, which is fourteen days, two, two publications, but um Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong. Again, I'm a little bit ha- uh hamstrung here, but the date for the public hearing is the, the um ninth of October or the eighth of October?
The, the ninth of October and then the following day, the finance committee is making their recommendation and the booklet is being sent to the printer. So there's
Right.
not any wiggle room.
So you, so you'll have an opportunity for one public hearing here. And so you'll close the public hearing on the ninth and presumably uh make a recommendation because you're really required to. So that's the timeframe that you're, that you're dealing with. Nobody is thrilled about that. Um, but it, this all stems from the fact that when the select board um uh on Friday will set the date of the meeting and that has to be um no more than forty-five days after the petition was certified.
And if I can jump in Hillary, real quick, can I just, can I add some color to that, Hillary? So, so the, the problem, I, I guess that the, really the big question here is, is, is how important do does a board member feel, the board feel about having printed motions in the warrant? And I would argue that we should do everything in our power to make that happen to reduce confusion, to have the information in one place. And I one hundred percent hear your concerns and I agree with you. But I think under the constraints that we find ourselves in with a special town meeting, it doesn't offer that to us. So we're gonna have to buckle down for a long meeting on the ninth because I don't think there's an option beyond that. And that's my feeling, but so go ahead, Hillary. I'm sorry.
But yeah, I mean, I, this, so this, we don't have to put anything on the warrant. Okay. We can let the citizen um article proceed to the town meeting, the special town meeting. People could come and vote on it. And if it succeeds, they'll, people who wanted it will be happy. And if it fails, we will do what we were always going to do, which is to bring a properly vetted article with plenty of opportunity for people to engage with to the annual town meeting. And um, you know, that might, that's one strategy. Um, it's, it's never good to go into a town meeting with a lot of unanswered questions, especially if you have, you know, influential people on the board who really are not supporting the article. I mean, I think if we're gonna put this on the warrant, we have to like it. I, I don't want to put something on the warrant that like people feel like they don't like. I want to vote not just to put it on the warrant. If we don't, if we only have a week, you know, we've all been at this. And by the way, in twenty twenty, after Article ninety failed at this annual town meeting, the planning board said they would own this issue. And our planning director at the time brought forward um recommendations of six different ways we could address the short term rental problem or fact, if you don't want to call it that, the short term rental existence. There were six different ways. And then the leadership of the planning department changed, the planning board changed, and all of that went by the wayside. So this absolutely is a zoning article. It's our responsibility. We claim responsibility in the fast, past and we have to deal with it. So the idea that we're just going to say like, oh, well, we'll put it on the warrant, but we're not really gonna support it. I, I think that's like, we owe Nantucket more than that. Um, if we cannot figure out how to get behind this article, I don't think we should bring it for a vote because we, we owe Nantucket more than that. We can take the time we need. We need an economic study, you know, at least about the taxes, eight and a half million dollars. Like, how much of that is hotel taxes? How, how many more guest houses that have folded that used to exist would come back if, you know, there are lots of economic issues. How much are we paying for affordable housing? You know, that would, that paying for tax because we have inflated rentals because people have commercial properties. There are lots of economic issues that need to be explored. So I don't like the idea of just, you know, saying, oh, I will punt and put it on the warrant and, you know, have an option and that we, you know, once again, we're not gonna have to like nail this down.
Hillary, if, if you would like to ask those questions directly about the economic impact, I have someone on this meeting that is willing to answer those for you.
Yes, if there's someone here, I would love to hear comments about the economic income impact.
Could you please bring Matt Hefner over? And I'm sorry, Nat.
No, I
No, I I know what I gotta lower.
We'll wait for Matt.
I'm promoting Matt right now.
Hi, Matt.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Awesome.
Um, so that was kind of rapid fire questions. I I think the the first one was, what is the impact on our 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 tax? Our taxes that we take in for short-term rentals?
Yeah, and I wanna, I I wanna start by just saying, as I've been listening to this, uh it's important, I think, from the way that I'm looking at this, and just to help sort of guide the conversation that there's a little bit of switching between all or none, and that's not really what we're talking about. You know, all would be, say, full codification, and there'd be no changes to any tax revenue or anything that's happening. And none, let's say, would be no short-term rentals at all. And sometimes I think what we're really talking about is how much change would happen or how much tax revenue might be lost. And I think it's important to say that the article that you're talking about is in the middle. It it's not a, it's not a major change from what I'm looking at or what I'm seeing in terms of total nights of tax revenue. It will have some impact, but I think that is the very nature of a compromise. But with the amount of short-term rentals that are registered, um, you can still have a really significant number of nights rented and generate significant tax revenue. Dave, I'm just gonna start there before I get into more specifics, because I've been listening for an hour and a half. I don't want to try and get too specific right off the rip.
No, no, and and Hillary, uh uh through me, please continue to ask financial questions or or numbers questions to to Matt, because well, I've spent a lot of time with Matt. He has a lot of information.
Well, I um, Matt, I'd like to hear the information that you've prepared that that you think is relevant to the whole board to hear and that maybe addresses um Peter Halli's question. But I I guess my overarching question is, can we get a report? Like an actual report out um before this special town meeting with information for the public about the economic impact?
Dave, through you, i- is that a, is that a direct question? Are you asking that generally?
I I think that's a direct question, Matt.
Um, I'm I'm happy to present and share and and document all the things I have and and put information up to have people like look at it and try to figure out, you know, where where I'm where I'm right, where I'm wrong, where people have questions. But there's a lot of information, and I I don't think this is as opaque or unknown of a question as as a lot of people think it might be. You know, a- at a simple level, you can look at the average rental rates. You can multiply it by the number of rentals that we have and the capacity that you're talking about, and you can figure out the tax revenue. Like, it's not, it's not that um it's not that complicated of a question if you're okay generalizing some things, which I think is the level we're talking about. There's enough variability with the market mechanics that we're all happy to benefit from, that I think some amount of the problem's gonna evolve. You guys are gonna implement policy or that you guys are gonna propose a policy or not. The town's gonna vote on something, and then the market will figure out how to best fill it. You know, I I think at some level, the tax revenue keeps going up. One question I have for you, Dave, is when people say, are we gonna lose out on tax revenue? Compared to what? The the what, the two-year all-time spike that we've never seen before? Or a normal amount of tax revenue that we've been averaging over the last six years?
Yeah, I I think that it would, it would be the normalized. I mean, I don't think, you know, the outlier data really isn't representative of of how any of us see this market going forward.
Yeah. And I think that's right. And and Hillary, one to, oh, sorry.
No, Hillary, did you?
I I just think it would be important for Matt to identify himself, who he is, how he has this information, just, you know, for the public.
Matt, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I I apologize. Um, I'm Matt Hefner. Um, I um, voting resident of Nantucket, I worked with a short-term rental work group. It was three years ago, whatever that was, um, got information from the town, the state, some of the platforms, et cetera, and worked with a lot of you on this call over the last four, three years, um, just understanding the problem and gathering an understanding of the data. Um, I have different data sources right now, some that I've purchased, um, some that are publicly available, some that um I've been given through, you know, looking at the reports from NARAB, looking at platform data numbers online um that I've purchased, um, that, you know, all all sorts of information, tax data, um, public records, et cetera. And 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 what I do is I'm I'm a data data analyst and do a lot of data work to figure out how to answer complicated questions. Um, and I've been working on Nantucket for, I don't know, six years, five years now, so that that's a little bit of my background.
Thank you. So can I ask a question, Dave, of Matt? Okay, um, so um, the, it was, we got a letter. Um, I don't actually know how much tax revenue we get from short-term rentals. The letter said it was eight and a half million. Is that in that, but can you just tell me, is that like on average, is that last year? And that eight and a half million, is that just like the rental of of dwelling units? Or does that include all short, all um taxes that come from hotels and guest houses, et cetera?
Yeah, so so the one thing I'm just gonna say upfront, and then I'm gonna make it a simpler conversation is when we talk about um like in-season and out-of-season and how different years have been as a community from the economic point of view, we we're largely talking about calendar years. Um, the town data, the the state tax data is fiscal year. So there's a little bit of um massaging to make those one and the same. But I'll go back to twenty twenty-one, and I'm just, I'm looking right now at a report from the current, that was from this um finance department. The total revenue um from both short-term rentals and traditional lodging, going back to twenty twenty-one, was just under eight million, seven point nine eight. In twenty-two, it goes up to twelve and a half. I'm rounding here. In twenty-three, it goes up to thirteen and a quarter. In twenty-four, it went to thirteen point seven. And in twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, excluding the spring um payment period, it's at twelve and a half. Now, now that's hotels and short-term rentals. Um, short-term rentals in twenty twenty-one accounted for five point eight. In twenty twenty-two, seven point six. In twenty twenty-three, eight million. In twenty twenty-four, eight and a half. And in twenty twenty-five, before the fourth quarter, uh was at just under seven point one million. You know, there's some interesting shifting within all that, but you know, out of the, let's say, thirteen million dollars or more that we can expect in twenty twenty-five, and I would imagine we're on pace for similar in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We're talking about shifting a small, a a a small amount of just the short-term rental income, tax revenue. And some of that, if we remove the number of short-term rental rooms, I I think it'd be reasonable to assume would move over to traditional lodgings, if not all of them, maybe we can't accommodate all of it. But if there's vacant rooms and someone can't stay in an Airbnb or a or a vacation rental, uh, you know, more than none are gonna move to hotels. So I I think we're talking about a reasonable amount of, you know, it's a real amount of tax revenue, but it's not an amount that's, this isn't an all or nothing type discussion here.
Hillary.
Yeah, anyway.
Joe, was your, did you have a numbers question, or you want me to keep going with Hillary? Everyone's bouncing around. Joe?
Go go back to Hillary then.
Okay, great. Hillary?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so please, anyone jump in with numbers questions, but um, so I, so what you just said, Matt, was that if we have fewer um inventory of nights of short-term rental, guests will shift to other lodging accommodations. So it's it's not like that's the only option for people. Again, you know, we probably want some numbers about uh how much lodging do we have? And I know it's been shrinking because guest houses have converted to um residential houses. But but there is fluidity between these lodging um options. And it's also possible and, you know, appropriate for the planning board to have a view as to whether or not we want to create policy that pushes people towards guest houses in um commercial areas uh if they're having very short stays or not. That that would be a legitimate policy uh question to talk about. The um question about the total number, so Matt, under this um bill that uh Dave and Tom, or the article that Dave and Tom have worked out, we are um putting um, you know, limits on the um number of contracts, the number of nights allowed, et cetera. How does that impact this tax revenue in your forecast?
Um, so, so I'm importantly, I'm gonna talk about capacity. Um, because I'm not, one thing I've tried to not do in this all is predict what happens within the market, the the real estate market when when shifts happen. Um, so, you know, if right now, let's say this year, we expect, what did I say, eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty-five of short-term rental revenue? You know, you can look at where did that come from? Um, and and where and what are the changes that we're making going to do to the potential for that revenue? You know, for all I know, we have horrible weather and people don't show up. I I'm not in control of that. I'm not in control of people. S- you know, if we, if you implement this policy and the town votes on it, people might also say, you know what, I'm just gonna, you're on rent, or I'm gonna sell. I, we don't control all that. But but what I would say is that with the currently registered homes, short-term rental homes, uh if you multiply out the number of total nights that they could rent, and you deduct the fourteen days um that are tax-free, and you multiply it by the average rate, you know, we're still talking about developing somewhere between a hundred and a hundred thirty million of taxable revenue, generating seven million. So, you know, we're talking about a little bit less revenue, or we're talking about less revenue, but of course we are, we're we're lim, we're putting some limitations on on what people can do to generate revenue, but a million is, I don't know, uh seven percent of the tax revenue, and it's only, you know, and and that's tax revenue that we didn't have until a few years ago at that level. So I think it's a, it's a small change, but I'm not, you know, some, Brian can tell you how much that matters or what it would do and where else that revenue might come from if it shifted to uh hotels. Because I, you know, someone saw someone sort of shake their head when I suggested that some of those would move to hotels. I'm not saying all of it would, but I think if we're, if we're gonna base a lot of this on the idea that the market will adapt, I don't know why more people wouldn't stay in hotels if there were fewer nights in short-term rentals. I, I. It's more expensive, but some will. It's not all or nothing.
And if I could just add in, because, you know, in one of my meetings with with Stephen Maury, Stephen Maury suggested to someone sitting on the other side of the table that, hey, i- if these regulations go in, you're gonna end up creating more short-term rentals. So everyone has the right to rent these days, right, in season? And if it creates a demand, something's gonna fill that demand, right? A- and the and the people that are are for more restriction, most of them turned around and said, well, I don't have a problem with that as long as it spreads that load out in a neighborhood and it isn't focused on one house. And so that's kind of of the thought process that a NARAB member had with someone sitting across the table that was in favor of more restrictions. So a- and I think it's a pretty accurate description of how the market will respond to the restrictions. Um, so I'm sorry to interrupt. Hillary, do you have another question?
Oh, no, I'd love to hear other questions from other people.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go to Nat just fell off.
Yeah, I know, I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry, John.
I'm trying to not like be redundant with my hand up and down, up and down. Okay, is Miss, is Brian Turbin on this meeting? Just asking, because that's my first question. Like, I feel like I'm at a steamship meeting, a capital programs meeting, and a finance committee meeting now, okay? When I got, when I got told twenty years ago that when you take a dollar out of the steamship budget, you gotta put it back in somewhere else. That's the way the town works, too. It's kind of crazy, but that's the way stuff works. Making hidden comments about we can afford this, or ca- or ca- it, I have been listening to this tax issue for a a long time. Taxes are cheap on the Antucket. It ain't cheap to live here. It ain't cheap to own a house here, even if it's a free house. Okay, even if it's a generational house. How's your house insurance working out lately? Eight grand, ten grand a year for a covenant house that's new because it's a new house. But it's only worth eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, but you gotta pay house insurance that is out of this world because it's a new house. The Antucket isn't, we do have things that are, we're very fortunate. Our water bill is low. We have certain things, but other things are not. And dictating and sort of patronizing this issue is the last thing we should be doing, whether you're, if you're in favor of this article. I can tell you that. Because if I was somebody that didn't know what I was talking about, listening to that, I would be fuming, okay? Because everybody's personal portfolio of their property and their life is different. It's different. There are people here that gotta give their rental away to friends and family at the height of the season. And they gotta rent in the off-season a little bit to make up for it. Depends on what their life entails. Other people are paying their kids college tuition with it. I mean, you don't know what everybody's life is like. I mean, we're it again, we've just approved, you can have horses and cows on Union Street by right. Now, I'm not saying anybody's stupid enough to try to do that, but you can, you can have daycare anywhere. Okay? Just saying. Like, this issue has gotten so out of control and so convoluted. And the horse has been out of the barn for a hundred years, and we're trying to put the whole damn horse back in in a brand-new way that no one ever thought of. That is the reason that this needs to be, and I'm just talking from, forget about supporting the articles for for the warrant. You gotta legalize it to stop the lawsuits and then regulate from there. I don't see any other way to ever solve this, even though there may not be a lot to solve. There's gotta be, you you can't regulate this into oblivion with all these different things and get people on board with that. I just don't see it. But we can continue this. I'm just frustrated hearing that stuff about the money because the properties on this island that don't pay any property taxes, I know I'm not supposed to talk about that, but I'm gonna say something about it right now, is a lot more than this. But we're never gonna fix that. Now, we've got new revenue that, once that revenue hits those hits the books on the Antucket's income, it's gonna have to get replaced by something else because you can't take it away. It'll have to get replaced. Once it's in the budget, it's gonna get replaced by something else. I was on fit, I was on capital long enough to see how that works, just like the steamship. It's unbelievable, but it's identical. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Nat. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to Hillary's point, I I I I feel like we're a little bit of a gun to our heads with this, and no disrespect to you, Dave, but I feel like this is really being forced on us, and and I'd like more dialogue about this. Couple months, ninety days at least, you know, or what is it, within our purview? But I just feel like this is being pushed. So, you know, when I first read this, I was like, this is gonna turn into a gated community, like no one's gonna be able to live here. It's gonna like, you know, how many small businesses are gonna go down? You know, what is gonna happen to like all the festivals? Like, which nonprofit's gonna fold? Who's gonna go, you know, go out of business, you know? Are we gonna now ask for like more Ralph Lauren stories and the like to come in and and fill the rental holes? You know, I really feel like this is gonna be a problem. And then I start to look at, you know, the NARAB numbers, and I'm like, well, maybe the days that are here, you know, is that just shuffling where there was, what, twenty-one houses that rent, you know, fifty percent of the time? Well, if that maxes out, does that, people go all the way to other houses? Does that help out and kind of spread it around? I don't know, but at the same point, like, what happens if this article does go in? You know, how quickly can it be taken out? What if the the impacts are extreme to Nantucket? How fast can we move? Are we gonna have another special meeting, town meeting to remove this, back it off? You know, uh, Matt, I, 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 you know, I love your numbers and stuff like that, you know, you geek out on this and it's great. The only problem is like, did you help Emily Molden with her article and and trying to load the numbers? I just feel like there's a lot of things that we need to ask questions about. So that's why I'm saying I'm for full codification. I I would like to see that. I think it's important, but I think that this is going to have a major impact on a lot of small local businesses. The other part of it is I had a friend for six months that was up in Boston getting cancer treatment. He had to rent his house. He had no other choice. It was his only income. He was gonna lose his house, so he had to rent it. He had to get people going to rent his house. So we have invented out all these other things and and I I feel like the the local of eighteen pers, you know, percent of the renters of Nantucket and SDRs, I don't think they really have a major seat at the table. I don't think that their voice is being heard. The what ifs, the what happened to the people, the day to day people, you know? I'm gonna, sorry for calling on my sister, but when she got divorced for five years, she had to rent out a house. You know, thankfully she had a little cottage she could go into, but thi- this is real. She couldn't have any other choice. The the day restriction, she couldn't have done it. She would have had instead of five years, she would have had to probably seven or eight. So I think we really need to think about this. I I this is the backstop, but I also feel we should put it forward, but I don't think we should be recommending it because I don't think we know all the numbers of it. I think it's being really rushed. I know, Dave, you've had a lot of meetings with everyone, but I just think that this is gonna major impact to to the locals that may need to do this, or a family that inherits a house. And they may need to do the upkeep and they wanna keep it. There's a story of a woman in Maticke where the family rents the house. They only get a week on Antucket, but that's their childhood memory and they like coming back every summer. Are we gonna hurt them? Are we gonna have them like, we're gonna force you, oh? The gentleman on Cliff because it's a noise violation and the guy sells his house? Ward and and the greats, that's a noise violation. That is not an SDR problem. That is a noise violation problem. So this is why we need to codify. We need to get the rules in place. We need to get programs in place, people in place. A a police department guy, hire next to a special guy that goes to these houses when there's a major problem with SDRs. Th- this is the problem with this. It's not well thought out as far as like looking down the road. It is thought out. It just needs more study and more time. And all the numbers right now are saying that after the COVID spike, all the numbers in town are are two thousand eighteen. And I think that this year there's gonna be more of a drop off in some of those numbers around town. But if this happens and this goes in place, is N I R and all these other people that rent, you know, uh, commercial properties in town, are they lowering their rate? Are they gonna adjust? Like, this, there's gotta be a balance or something's gotta give, or is everyone just gotta sell? And this goes back to my comment. Are we gonna create a gated community? And as the town, as people move out of the, is the town gonna buy these as affordable housing? You know, and then again, it's like, who's, who's protecting the bed and breakfasts from going away? What happens if they go away? Someone just wants to sell? Can anyone afford it? Is anyone gonna keep it a bed and breakfast? Is it financially stable to do that? Viable? I mean, I just think there's so many problems with this that you, someone may shift out of somewhere, but there's gotta be another problem. It's gotta go somewhere. So what what is the solution? And I don't, that's where I'm saying there's a lot of questions to this. Do I think it should go forward? Do I think the public should vote on? Yes. But I think that the first one going forward, that needs to be first and this needs to be the backstop. Because like I said earlier, Judge Bay's decision is thirty one days and that is gonna really cripple Nantucket. And some people don't care. They may not, they may have financial means to do this, but I can tell you right now, if I have to rent my house or I had to do something, I've had a couple mo, major surgeries. I don't think I would wanna be in that position where I couldn't be able to save my home or do what I need to do from day to day. And I think this is really gonna be a problem where we really need to sit down and kind of think about like, what are the financial impacts? And and I just think that this is gonna be really problematic for town if we don't get these solutions. But it it may be the town has to vote in something and and is this the one that that works? I don't know, but I think the first one is the right one to go with. But I do think the voters should be going forward to town meeting and be voted on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joe. John? You're muted, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so a couple of points, n- not related to one another, but anyway, I'm just thinking about um, whether we should um, not put something, you know, a printed version of our article, um, you know, onto the warrant. I I think that would be a a really bad mistake. You know, I I I get public hearings, but we can't, the timeline is the timeline. And I think the, the, our community deserve, when they get their booklet, it shouldn't just have one citizen's article on there. It it should have ours. Um, and uh, because if not, it sends a message of its own that a planning board that's been at this for five or perhaps even six years um, still need more time before they can put something into the book for our community to consider prior to the special town meeting. So I think um, I I hope we um, you know, we do vote to to put it on the warrant, but I do hope we also vote i- in a way that it can, something, it can be printed i- in the, in in the warrant. You know, I, I, then I look at um, Matt's numbers and unfortunately, I, you know, I'm not a financial whiz, so I can't quickly calculate, you know, compound annual growth rates. But, you know, from twenty one, I think Matt said five point eight million came of taxes came from short term rentals. And in last year, in twenty four, that was eight point five. Well, that's over, that's about a forty six percent increase over three years with all the uncertainty that there's been. So, y- you know, the business seems to be alive and well. And even with the the drop off in twenty five to seven point one, I think that's still about ten percent, you know, a year. So I, y- you know, yes, we need more data, but when I think about the three or four years that I've been involved with this, and especially the short term went, short term rental work group, we had a lot of data. And, you know, in the end, it was more of a politically driven decision at town meeting than it was a data driven. I I'm not saying decision. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just saying that that in the end, what was it? So um, you know, I I hope we, we, we vote to put it on uh, on the warrant and I hope we vote to get it in the booklet. I I would like to take just a minute, if I could, Dave, to, you know, wh- why do I think that what we have is good? You know, I went back and I I thought about all of the things that were important as we went through this last three years. I I I, and this seems to hit a lot of the boxes, you know? Minimize turnovers and help preserve the character of residential neighborhoods. Well, yeah, of course, y- you know, a seven day min- minimum is going to reduce the number of turnovers and it is gonna help, you know, um, preserve the nature of of our neighborhoods. Um, discourage homes being sold to in, as investor only properties that used to be um, you know, year round homes for, for our community. Well, yeah. Putting some restriction on the numbers of days, um, maximum for the calendar year. And then in particular, for the summer period, that is gonna make it less attractive to investors. For sure, it's gonna make it less, eh, eh, less attractive. How much? I don't know, but 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 a lot. And, you know, somebody already mentioned this. You know, when Nat talks about what the past used to look like, I was one of those renters through, you know, the eighties and the nineties. And yeah, I always rented for a week. You know, the, the, and that was good. You got to enjoy Nantucket. I never used to show up for two or three days and have a party. And I I think this, this, again, the the minimum days is is gonna help that. Um, I, I think I'll leave it at that, Dave. I think what you, what you and Tom have here hits most, i- if not all of the boxes that we've tried to um, put in one package over the last three or four years unsuccessfully. But this does feel different and better to me. And I I really hope that, you know, we can support it. Uh, and I know that isn't for today, but it does deserve to go on the warrant as as you have it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, John Leslie.
Uh, just a a timing. Am I, uh, just a, just a timing thing to point out to the board. Um, we did draft a legal ad for this article that um, has been sent to the Inquirer and Mirror. We have a one o'clock sort of hard deadline with them to either include that in the publication of the paper tomorrow or to remove it from the legal ad and not publish it tomorrow. So um, it's important that we know if this is going to be included on the warrant or not, so that we can amend the legal ad accordingly if needed before one o'clock. Which I know is a little pressure on you, but.
Yeah, as we continue to be under the gun. Um, I, what I'd like to do is, is discuss the edits that that have been put forward. Um, I I don't mean to cut you off, Hillary. Um.
No, I was just gonna try to move the conversation along as well.
Okay, um, so um, I I think everyone received, a- and this is my fault, but some um, some consideration for edits and 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 they were basically two of them put forward by um, the Land and Water Council and one was to um, shorten the forty nine days to um, to forty two and to broaden the July, the August thirty first to Labor Day.
Um, I thought that was an or.
Um.
One or the other.
Asking for both. I I, and again, I've, I've said multiple times that we're on a really narrow line here, so I I, I I wanna offer it to the board. I have great concerns about it and I'll just say it for that. So, John, go ahead, or Hillary, you had the floor. I'm sorry if if you wanted to finish that thought before we go to John.
Uh, well, I do think it's, if we're gonna talk about their edit, I'm just looking at it. It it's, I think it's an or.
Okay.
Accomplished by reducing the days allowed during the fifth, Aug, June fifteenth, August thirty first to forty two.
Yep.
With, that would mean twenty eight days from, if you take all the forty two, which would be your option, twenty eight days remaining. And it said this could also be accomplished to a lesser extent by extending the dates when forty nine days can be used. So it's an or. They, their, their request is to either have it be forty two during the window that's currently in the proposal or change the dates to Labor Day. And it remains to be um, forty nine. Um, I, I was just gonna try to move the conversation along in deference to Leslie's request um, by saying that it does, I I know we need to make some tweaks here with these questions, but it does seem like um, all five members of the planning board seem to be interested in a motion to put this on the warrant with the second issue being whether or not we are supporting this. Um, and that's something that we may or may not vote on today.
Supporting it will be a, will would be on the ninth meeting, I think, today. And I think I stated that earlier in the meeting that really our job today is to decide as a board whether we are going to move, move this forward and have it on the warrant. And and that's, and as I stated, that's aside from all of our personal feelings, whether it's right or it's wrong or anything else. This is just about us putting it on the warrant. John, your hands up.
I'm gonna lower it because I I would say then the tweaks that uh, the Land and Water Council are talking about which should be left then, Mr. Chair, to the ninth, right?
We, we can do that for sure.
Uh, that's.
And to add to what John just asked some more, this, this nothing to do with a planning board comment, anything in this meeting, correct?
Nope, that's gonna happen on the night.
Okay.
We can battle that one out then.
Yep, thank you.
So if if everyone's on that page, I would entertain a motion from somebody.
I I have a, sorry, I'm so sorry. I have a question. Can, can we, I just think we might want to advertise for more than one date for a public hearing. And I see Megan is shaking her head no. I mean, I know we're going to have a meeting on the ninth, but can we also schedule a meeting for the next week as well? And if not, why not? Why is that a bad idea?
Meg?
So we can't because the FinCom will need to then make their recommendation on the tenth so that the warrant could be sent to the printer to comply with the charter requirements for the mailings to all registered voters, uh, so that that mailing happens fourteen days prior to the special town meeting. So October the ninth is the only opportunity for a public hearing. Um, just given, given the chain of events that need to happen to make this all come together.
Right, but if I could just follow up, can't we still, we can still mail the warrant and we can still convene a hearing to have more discussion among ourselves to, you know, with, there could be many things that could happen, um, and we would still have fulfilled our responsibilities to bring the article properly.
So you all as a board will need to decide, and I I think you all touched on this a little bit earlier. Um, the meeting on the night, that would also comply with, with the motion being printed in the warrant. Um, technically speaking, you could change that up until the meeting. Um, so that's, that's up for you all to decide how important it is to have that clearly printed in the warrant or not.
I I think we can have it, we can decide and we can make the final um, vote on the ninth, but we can also protect our potential need to have an additional public hearing if we feel it's necessary the week of the um, fifteenth or even the twenty second to have more discussion on the topic. It's just that we have this two week deadline to post. I mean, I guess we could have a meeting and have it not be a public hearing. I just, I'm just recognizing that we might need more time to discuss.
So I don't oppose more discussion. I have great concerns about one, not having our motions in the warrant um, printed in the warrant as they're mailed. I think that history has shown that any confusion around warrants or
Yes, yeah.
can really cause havoc and a lot of times lead to not giving that warrant article its, its due chance before the voters. So that's my concern. I I would suggest pack a lunch a- and and burrow down on the ninth and and let's take the time we need to do this. And and with that said, I agree, this shortened timeline isn't the, for the benefit of anyone, but I I have great fears of not letting the, not letting the voters have options and just throwing, letting one go in front of them and crossing our fingers. I'm not sure is the best, is the best approach. John?
Uh, just quick. Okay, so we can't have one after the ninth, but to Hillary's point, could we have some kind of meeting, even if it's ourselves, between now and the ninth? Is there any value to that?
Uh, we could have, I mean, it wouldn't be a public meeting. I'd I'd have to defer to staff. It wouldn't be a public meeting. Well, it wouldn't be the official public hearing we need.
No, 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 no. I'm just thinking, you know, do we feel there's any value to us having another go around prior to the uh, public hearing?
I think there could be value in us discussing after the ninth, but I I think that, I I think it's important that we, on the ninth, put forward our recommendations however this board falls and have them printed in the warrant. And then we can discuss whether it's a good idea or bad idea to be changing our motion before town meeting. Leslie?
Well, if the board decides to move forward with the article and have it printed in the warrant today, that's what your vote is. I I think, and John Giorgio can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be at best a bad practice to have a conversation between now and the ninth. I mean, the planning board is required to hold a public hearing on the warrant article as it's published in the warrant. So I think you should not have any discussion about it until the scheduled public hearing.
The, this vote is for the warrant, for the article to be on the warrant. It is not a motion for supporting the article or not. We gotta be clear about this. We're already. We gotta be clear about this. We're already causing confusion. I can feel the confusion, okay? And we got to stop this. Is it all we, that's what gets us in trouble. You can be in favor of the public process, but you have a right to be against the article itself. But support it going on the warrant. Like, we've done this before with a couple of other things that you said. I wouldn't agree with you as far as a rail zoning article versus this, but that's okay, Dave. Um, so I would make a motion to, to support. The article on the warrant. That's all we're doing.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Nat, seconded by Hillary. Nat?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Um, gang, uh, very spirited, very good. I appreciate all your perspectives and, um. And thank you. This was a good meeting.
You know, Dave, before we adjourn, I just wanna say the reason to request, as John suggested, and as I'm suggesting, more discussion. Either before or after the public hearing is that we have to have information that we're making decisions and recommendations on. Um, you know, apparently Matt Hafner Raffer has a lot of information. I guess he's dug into this out of civic interest in Nantucket. None of that's been given to us in print. The NARAB, um, document is extremely useful. Oh, I'd like to discuss it, you know, in a fulsome way. Um, so that we're not just kind of going on our gut instinct or, you know, what, what our friend needs. I mean, we, we have to make policy for this island. So, um, I would like to see a staff recommendation. Um, I'd like to see a planning board report. And I'd like to see, you know, the additional information that Matt has in writing that we can present to people. Um, and unless, you know, Dave, you've been so willing to do all of this work and working with Tom, and it's really helpful. Maybe somebody else wants to, to get that together, but if it needs to be discussed as a board, we have to be willing to roll up our sleeves. And really get the facts so that whatever position we're taking, we can defend it.
No, and I agree, and, and I'm more than happy to request, uh, Brian Turbit to come to our, our public hearing meeting. Um, and, and Matt as well, and, and to give everyone a, uh, the fullest understanding. Of the financial impact as possible.
It, we may be asking for a lot of minutia with this. You can't follow every trash bag, every suitcase, every credit card, every restaurant visit, every trip to the brewery. I, I, you, within reason. But not getting, you cannot nail down these things. That's, it's insanity. Okay, we tried doing this with cars years ago, and it's like, that's why we've never done anything, cuz you can't. But yes, from financial part. Versus room and houses and hotels, that kind of stuff is different. That's not what I'm talking about.
But we also have to, I, I think experience has shown, a- and we, we saw it with the, with the work group. We've seen it on the floor of town meeting that to us, this data is important, a- and I think it's an important part. But unfortunately, to the general public, this is an emotionally.
Yes, and that's true.
Object, and.
That's why.
Emotional argument that's gonna win the day at town meeting regardless of what the data says. Uh, uh, unfortunately, I mean, sorry, Matt, but that's.
No, it's true.
Unfortunate reality. For us to be informed and to make us good, feel good about our decisions, one hundred percent important and I support. But in the end, unfortunately, this is gonna really be an emotional battle, a- and, and, and that's what's gonna win the day. Um, so everyone, everyone good?
Yep.
Yeah. Entertain a motion.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, staff.
Yeah, staff, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, John Giorgio. Staff, you guys.
Don't take anything personally, man.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, Matt, made by Nat, seconded by Joe. Nat?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Again, thank you, everyone, very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.